All right, we've got a call to order the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 at 5:31 PM. I'd like to start if we could with an invocation. Veronica, would you like to lead that please? Could stand with us.
Laura, thank you for this day. Thank you for this city. Thank you for the people gathered here today to represent Glen Rose. Would you please just be with us during this meeting? Be with us as we make decisions for this city. Help us to always keep in mind the mission and vision that you have for this town. Thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for your son. He died on the cross for all of our sins. We pray this to your son's powerful name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Do the pledges of allegiance first, United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Roll call of the council. Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Conrad.
President.
Councilmember Remy.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
President.
Councilmember Fries.
Present.
All the kind of four or five people in attendance. We don't have any visitor comments. No one signed up, correct?
Correct, sir.
Stacy. We're going to move straight into, we've been requested to move executive session, all three executive sessions to beginning of the meeting. If there's any council member of comments or issues or... Is anybody okay with that?
No issue.
Okay.
Do we have anybody in the audience that needs anything in between there?
Well, there's lots in between there currently, but...
That's fine.
Okay. All right, well, in accordance with provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code annotated in accordance with Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney regarding interlocal agreements. In addition, we'll have Section 551.074, personnel matters to wit, conversation on city administrator, and 551.074, consultation regarding city secretary. We're going to excuse ourselves. You're welcome to stay. It should take a little while. I don't know. Don't have an idea, but if you would, enjoy each other, get to know one another a little better. We'll be back as quickly as we can. So, ending the regular meeting at 5:35.
I'm on green. Bring around some of that steak frits. I'm on green.
I think even.
They're on.
Yeah, it is.
Beautiful.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the regular city council meeting at 6:37 PM. Seven. Oh, sorry. Seven thirty seven PM. And once again Veronica, if you can make notes at all. In executive session, we only had one action item and that is to continue to have our city administrator work with the county with agreements that have been offered and spoken about. Continue to work with them and move those forward. In the other executive session, number twenty-two and twenty-three, there was no action taken. And we're going to go back into the regular meeting and start with individual items for consideration. We're going to start with the discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the adoption of the city of Glen Rose maximum proposed tax rate for two thousand twenty-four. An open discussion.
What I would say, you know, we have, we've worked through this, you know, a number of years and we've been able to, you know, continually bring the tax rate down. Overall, and I know that last year we were at two point seven or twenty-seven point eighty-eight and this year our. Our no new, I'm trying to get to the page, our no new revenue. Yeah. Our no new revenue rate twenty-six point four three three and the voter approval is basically right where our current tax rate is at point two seven eight eight. I'm in favor of continually slicing it a little bit to, to give the, you know, the homeowner the break, you know, where we can. I think we're going to put something close to another seven hundred thousand or so. You know, in the, in the, in the bank when we close the books this year, you know, for the first time ever, I think we've topped fourteen million in reserves and I, I think that's. A very nice number and our interest rate continues to clock in very well. We, we're in a great financial position. So. I would like to see us drop it.
Counselor, I would. And this is an unusual position for me, but I would. Stress that the exemption. You know, I think it fulfilled your goals, right?
It kicks in in twenty-five, not in twenty-four.
I think we are, look, I mean, we could have a long discussion about what's going on with the legislature and tax rates and no new tax rates. But the legislatures are setting cities up to fail because the legislature is anti-city right now. And I got to tell you, you know, appraisals can go up and appraisals can go down. And when you lower the tax rate to near zero and appraisals go down. You've got some hard choices to make and those are, you know, who do we cut? And I've seen cities like Hutto in situations when the pandemic happened wherein one day they handed lay off forty-six employees. And that's because you get yourself overextended. I think there are ways to accomplish if, if you want to give money back to taxpayers. I would give it a year, see what happens and then next year you can make it up. Well, you already have one in twenty-five coming, but I, you know, to me, you amp up. You amp up the revenue stream first before you keep cutting. Our taxes are lower. When you compare our taxes to other cities around us.
It's true.
They're dramatically lower. You don't want to get yourself in a position where, I mean, we got one industry, that's it. Our ad valorem, our sales tax is twice what our ad valorem revenue stream is. And, you know, we're four square miles and we've had conversations about what that looks like down the grid. But, you know, unless, unless a bunch comes in that I don't know about, I don't see that much coming on next year. Twenty-five should be better because some of the things that we have starting now, Swab Alameda, some of the other developments, condos, they're going to contribute. But that's not for another year and a half, two years. I would just, I understand and I do, and if you look at my record, it was slash, 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 slash. I just think we're getting down now where if it doesn't keep going the same way, you're, that's a, that's a heck of an assumption to me in my.
Isn't there, I'm trying to remember where I was reading this and listening to, isn't there legislation that they're, they're looking to, to put some significant caps on property values?
They did that. They, they, they capped it at the, the ten percent level and then you can only take a five percent bite.
Isn't there, isn't there an effort underway right now to do that, to, to, to cut that even deeper for lack of a better term?
I haven't read it. It's probably, there's probably somebody in Austin who's, who's a hawk that direction, but I have not.
Because I remember when I was reading about that thinking. Yay, property owner, but that's the kind of thing. My, my head goes back to when there was a campaign that was happening recently for state representative and they kept talking about how the county had to do this massive increase in tax rate. And they were kind of using that as like the, oh, look, but what they forgot to talk about was this massive amount of, of a gap that came from ad valorem, from property taxes previously and that's why they had to do that. And I just kept thinking, man, I love that we keep getting to lower the tax rate, but at the same time, we could put ourselves in a real pickle really quickly if there's a change where, and to go, okay, we need to raise it. Point oh three cents versus we need to double it like they had to do. That's, those are the two things that were going through my brain.
And I know we're not ready to talk about the budget, but we've got some street renovations that are being suggested. Those are conversations, obviously, for the budget, but. I, I think there are some meaty things in there that the council may want to address. So when, I don't know that I would just make those decisions because we have fourteen million in the bank. That's my point.
Could we, could we do point two seven eight? Then there's, we shaved off something off of it.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, that.
It doesn't mean, it's, it's our max cap. It doesn't mean it's our rate, but it's our max cap to calculate the budget.
I could give it up.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
We have a roll call vote on this. Councilman Mann. Mayor Protem Conrad. Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman Freeze.
Yes.
Four zero, new tax rate passes. And that is, what was it again, George?
Point two seven eight.
All right. Thank you. Item number four, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a resolution changing the date of the October regular city council meeting. This is to take it out of T M L at the same time. So considerations for new dates for that. Let's not waste a lot of time here. We can just cancel it as far as I'm concerned.
October shouldn't be much happening.
And this is fine.
Look at your October calendar and let's consider.
It's just asking for the Monday before that, right? So the seventh, I can do that.
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we move the meeting for October.
Sir?
Second.
All in favor of moving to Monday, the seventh in October? Four zero passes. Veronica, you get to write down your first resolution.
Yes, sir.
It is number two zero two four dash R dash zero seven. Thank you. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a request from Ponia Fonseca.
Fonseca.
Fonseca, my partner in art for the city to cover the cost of a mural located at two fifteen Northeast Bernard. Would you like to come up, introduce yourself, give your name and address?
My name is Tanya Fonseca. I live at seven oh eight North Anglin Street in Cleburne. And yeah, I'm a muralist and I paint. And I painted the mural here in Glen Rose thirteen years ago. It was my first one. And it's bothered me for the last at least two years, maybe three years that it needs to be updated. It needs to be repainted. The paint has faded, you know, with time and it's.
Everyone's a buyer of what mural was out of town.
It's on the old Glen Rose auto car. Current Bernard Street mercantile. So anyway, when we, I painted it originally, the, my thought was it was the longest sightline coming into downtown Glen Rose. And it was a flat surface and it was, I wanted to paint a mural there very badly and I spoke to the C V B originally, Billy Huckabee was the director. And he agreed to cover, help me cover the cost of the paints and things that if I wanted to paint it and of course Pete owned the Glen Rose auto parts and. We came up with a design that we drew on a poster board. There were no computers, you know, we didn't use a computer to do anything. And he liked it and so we painted it. We never got any money for it and that was fine because I was happy to do it. And the C V B has used it. And the C V B has used it in the city to promote Glen Rose for quite a few years and. At the time, there was no real social media. There was no Facebook or Instagram and so we had no idea when we painted it. That it was gonna be all over Instagram and Facebook in a few years and that people used it to. Uh, I don't know, take prom pictures, make Christmas cards up. So it's kind of iconic Glen Rose now. People recognize this mural. And so um, the previous building owner, I spoke to her about it and she wanted to just paint over it completely. And so I disappeared because I wasn't gonna paint over it completely and um, it, I, uh, Danya, the current building owner. Um, we've done a, we started kicking around designs last year and we have done a million different designs on this thing. I've paid a graphic designer. By the time I give her the final payment on this, it'll be a thousand dollars. I'm out of pocket just trying to come up with a design. And what we wind up doing is going back to the original mural just because. It's iconic and people get upset when you talk about painting over something that's been here a long time. So. We redesigned her logo and so she's paying for her logo and for me to paint the side of the building. And so I'm asking the council because I don't know the way budgets work with the city or anything like that. But I think um, I'm here to ask if there's a possibility that the city would consider. Covering the cost of the update and restoration of the mural. Um, I spoke with Rita a little bit and I know that this gotta go to Glen Rose. I was aware that that was kind of the current slogan. Uh, she has concerns about having the original dinosaur and not using the slogan, the whole logo that goes together. I'm perfectly fine with leaving it the way it is now. It says greetings from Glen Rose. Um, and open to any suggestions. The only frame we changed out was the E because uh, Oakdale Park is now privately owned. And so we changed it out to put a tiger in its place and the pictures that we used are, all look terrible. But that's because that's what it looks like right now. It won't look like that when I paint it. It'll look, it'll be updated and the colors will be brighter. So um, we'll be approaching the historic preservation board, of course, to get an okay on the building colors. So I just put them on here, which I think is like, it's hard to tell from a computer monitor. But we used the city's historic color palette that they've chosen and I picked wispy white or cozy white based on a computer. But it won't be white. It'll be a cream color and then noir is like a dark kind of charcoal gray. So anyway, I'm just asking if the city would consider uh, paying for the update and restoration of that mural.
Questions, folks?
I'm sorry, can you go back to what Mrs. Gill said? What does she want, uh, not what she's wanting to do, but obviously she's been the direct, she. Obviously wants to paint over this. She's already talking about painting over it. So.
Oh, no, she's not talking about painting over the mural. Not, that was the building owner last year before Danya Gill bought it. She wants to restore the mural. She wants to keep it.
We, we could for sure. Yeah.
The, Tanya, you're estimating the cost at fifty one seventy five?
Yes.
And that is.
Twenty five dollars a square foot.
To do what?
To repaint the entire mural. So that's for the cost of the mural. Danya's covering the cost for her um, her sign and yes, and her um, the building being painted. So that is just for the cost to update the mural.
You see in the photo, they're taking out the auto parts and putting in mercantile, the current name of the building. And then we would be paying as a city for the restoration essentially of the current sign with some changes.
Yes, I, I would say, I think you're right. Like you see this coming in, right? So it, it, it is definitely a part of our city. I, it's one of the first things I remember seeing. And I, I can totally see us supporting this as it would be an effort for us and making kind of an Instagrammable moment, which I know you didn't have to think about back then. But we think about it now. I would just want it to be in partnership with our C V B and our city administrator to just, so. I don't want to approve the design per se. Um, I just want to make, I want it to work with, because you guys, we've got murals going up and, and different ideas in different places. So I want it to kind of be cohesive, but not necessarily match it. So kind of meet the vision of what they have going. So I'm totally comfortable. Um, with, with using hot text ones to do this. Um, I would definitely ask to work to make sure it's an Instagrammable moment. Um, cause people taking those pictures is our advertisement all over the place. I would just say, I don't know that this is the design or that you guys worked together to come up with what the right thing would be.
Do you use hot ones for this?
Yes, well.
You can?
Yeah. I'll just, I'll just give you my piece of what I think.
Yeah.
Uh, I think there's, look, there's kind of a couple of different sides to this because. Obviously this is something that predates the branding that we're doing right now.
Right.
So, and it's a private building. It's Danya's building. Um, so I don't, I, I think the crossover, I just have to be, I just be really careful about it. Like, do I want to. Now, you know, put branding together? Does it have to be, or is it better that I say, hey, um. If I'm gonna cover the whole thing, can we add at least some element where it kind of makes sense because the, my, it's my, my argument is not because I don't love. What they want to do. My argument is because I have so much money going toward this other branding.
That's my point. Listen, that's, that's my point is if we're paying for it and just to put it blatantly, if we're paying for it, then we need to have a say so on what it ultimately looks like and that it feels cohesive with the rest of the work that we're doing. And I'm sure you guys can make that happen.
Or here's also a solution. She can, they can do whatever they want and as, as just a, I would look at it like a grant. I would offer easily to say, hey, I'll put half in and y'all just do what you want. Or we can do a whole and say, I'm, you know, that's what I'm saying is.
My preference is we rarely get us, there's not a whole lot of opportunities.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have a lot of just big, well, we've got one big flat building. I'd love to put something on.
We need murals.
So, yeah, we need murals. We are an art, we're an art enclave that folks don't know that we're an art enclave. And so the more we can create that vibe, so if that's the case. Let us pay for it. Let us have a say so on what it looks like. Let it fit in with, let it meet, maybe fill a gap of what you don't currently already have a place for.
Yeah.
Let's partner together and, and make it happen.
Let me ask one thing, Tanya. Uh, twenty five dollar per square foot. That, would that be totally redoing it? Would still apply?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, okay, so let me. Anytime I talk about changing this mural, people in this town go crazy. They lose their mind. They don't want it changed. I mean. We had so many designs, ideas thrown out and it, we came back around to just keeping it the original iconic mural because of that. So I think that um, I don't know, I would have to talk to Danya and. She might be more open to taking your offer of a grant and keeping it original than repainting that. And I, and I understand why, you know, I just um, I would paint whatever anybody wants me to paint.
But I just think it should, personally, I just think if we're gonna keep it the way it is, because it's iconic, then it should just stay as it is iconic and not try to.
Not add in your slogan. Yeah.
Isn't, because then it's, it's just kind of a mix.
And Tanya, I don't want you to take this personally, um, but you know, what we've tried to do and because we get requests for money all the time.
Sure.
All the time, you know, whether it's a stage, whether it's a mural, whether it's whatever, a sign. And, and we, our uh, answer has always been, we can offer to pay if, if we can help, you know, kind of arrange the look. If that isn't okay, then you're on your own. And so I've had those conversations with them. Love Danya. Uh, and we've talked about that in the past. You know, she expressed to me at the time that she was gonna paint over it, so I guess that's changed, but um, but. I would support, um, I, I just think that things of, things evolve and, and, you know, we've talked about murals before and looked at other cities. And ours have been in one kind of framework or design, if you will. Whether it's Derek Crane, whether it's the building up there, whether it's building at the entrance, whether it's the auto parts, are all kind of that same theme. What we're kind of looking to do is maybe.
Mix it up.
Elevate. Um, so that's what I would say.
Okay.
But we'll certainly.
Yeah, but I mean, I think the point is that we definitely want murals. We definitely want art. We definitely want local people involved in art and murals in our town, like hundred percent. So like, all, all I'm saying is I, for me, it's more about spending my hot text, I'm. Cause I'm spending all this, all this visitors money. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear about, am I, is, is, am I spending this money for the visitor or for the local? And it doesn't matter. If that doesn't matter by Texas law, so it's, you know, I mean, so I just want to make sure I'm within the legal like sentiment about it, like. Is it preserving something that the locals love? Or do I spend the money to make something that is visitor aligned with all this new branding? That's, that's just kind of like my conflict. Has nothing personal. I think she's amazing and I want there to be local art, so.
That's a, that's a bit of a different conversation, but it's pertinent.
Yeah.
Uh, Shannon, do you have something?
Anne has a question. Anne has a statement. She wants to say. She won't look at her hands, so.
The building. In twenty sixteen went on the Meridian Highway under Textod with the mural as it is, which makes it an, and. Textod says that it is um, National Registry of Historic Places with that mural on it as it. As it is, as it is. It went into several other aspects with the mural as it is. I'm just giving you that piece of information. I am not trying to change your mind about changing the dinosaur or how you paint. I'm just telling you that that's a piece of information which some people may be aware of and they may not be aware of.
Well, I think it's pertinent. Uh, council, can we say that we're willing to put money into this? Once the design and the structure and what we're gonna see. I mean, we don't want to go work on it and look at it and have the city administrator and, and visit Glen Rose. Not work on it, but we don't want them to do it if we're not gonna be willing to support payment and assistance.
I don't think we should change. I think they've decided what they want. Am I right? I mean, they've already come to a decision. So if you guys tell me, hey Rita, we think this is, this is, I mean, I'm only, I've been there as long as y'all. So if you feel like this is a thing we have to preserve and it's for the visitor too, I'm, I'll do it. I, I really don't have.
I think, you know, I think it's gotta stay very similar to what it is with some changes could be made, but at the same time, I think. Spending our hot tax on it would be valuable because there's people that aren't even from here, uh, they're in town visiting and they want to go there and take their picture there. That's my opinion. I mean, I don't see any locals out there doing family pictures. I, I see them walking around and turn the corner like, oh, man, hey, take my picture. That took more of the visitors than it is the people that are residents.
That's why I like the gotta go to Glen Rose on.
I would love to paint uh, any updated, more progressive murals anywhere in the town. I mean, I'll paint anything.
I also think getting away from the branding just a little bit isn't that big of a deal because then your branding's still sticking out where it's at.
Why don't we do this? Uh, why don't we, if you guys are okay with the amount and the funds, prove it. We'll all get together and I'm sure we can come up with something that makes sense.
I think so.
I got two things I'd like to, so, so you said twenty five dollars a square feet by eight and a half feet times twenty three is a hundred and ninety five and a half square feet. Times twenty five dollars is only forty eight eighty seven, not fifty one twenty five.
And I did round it up to nine, nine feet because the ceiling height is nine, I mean, the, to the plate line is nine foot.
Okay. And while I'm not opposed to this, I, I really have. Issues with the precedence that it's gonna set for every other business, you know, if we sit here and, and tell. Dollar Tree, we want them to turn around and put a big old mural on the side of their building. Of course, that's gonna cost us a heck of a lot more. And, and I'm real concerned with the precedents we're setting for every business because everybody would love a mural. So I'm, I'm. I'm cautious, I'm very cautious on.
That's the same thing I thought.
You know, we could have ten different businesses come in next month and say, hey, we're, we're gonna do a mural. We, we want you to pay for it.
The mural, so it's like hard.
It's not the exact same thing. We're redoing something that is an iconic mural for the town. And if, if Dollar Tree wants to come and do it, in fact, they're really loving some mural.
Yeah. Well, no, but I think that we can make a business case, right? Like, so, so to the point that you made, Stuart, no, let's just use Dollar Tree since you said it. People aren't gonna pull over on the side of sixty seven and run over and take a picture in front of that. I wish, you know, I was gonna say I wish they would, but actually I don't. But, but that is, so when we go, okay, well, are you in a walking area? Are you in historic area? Are you in an area that has historicals? So we can, we have some context within this building that doesn't necessarily apply in other places. So I think we could say, well, the framework that this falls in, so if it's. If it's the side of, of the museum, that may be something that we, that we're willing to engage in because it's, it kind of fits into that, into that walking area. So. Um, what if, how would y'all feel about saying budgeting that we could budget fifty percent of the ask? Um, and you guys can partner on that and then that way it, it isn't a huge, that, that is the precedent set. So instead of the precedent set that we pay for the whole mural, the precedent is if you're willing to do a mural, we're willing to help you. Is that something you'd be more comfortable with?
Uh, I would.
How would you?
I don't know if they're gonna go for that. I don't, I don't want to lose, I don't. I don't want to lose this piece of wall right here over.
I think he said she was gonna just pay for it.
Yeah, I.
Initially.
Yeah, she, she, she was open to anything. She just.
She just wants.
So I, I, I'm, I.
Can I just, one, one quick question? Just dialing back, does not include the, the mercantile part of the logo?
No, that's the mural only. And the reason that it's priced the way it is is because. I, I price the murals based on square foot and then I also add in for the skill set required to paint something. And the skill set required to repaint this mural is, is a high level. I can't bring in. My helper to do a vectored image like I could on Plexi Trading Company. She could help me do any of that or him. But I could, but I could, I, I have to paint this myself. I have to be there because nobody can paint photographic images. Uh, nobody. Nobody that I know right now that I could bring in to help me do it. I would have to do it myself. So. And it's, it, and not just anybody can paint like that, you know?
It's very nice. I'm not, I'm not questioning the talent.
I know, it's not about talent. It's skill, man. I've, I've just painted a lot of years, so. And, and I'm willing to change that and, and not do that, uh, gotta go to Glen Rose on top of it if, uh, cause I understand you not wanting to mix.
I mean, I think I might want to, but just maybe just, I just want to make sure that I'm do, I'm, I'm, I'm spending the money the right way for the branding.
I understand.
I just don't know if I can make that like a design decision in the moment. I'd have to, let's just figure it out. That's all I'm saying. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Cause it's, you know, it's permanent. We want it to be exactly, you know, we're gonna go do it.
Okay, so I move to authorize the city administrator to um, distribute up to twenty five hundred dollars for the mural for. The update to the Texas mural on what was the Glen Rose Auto Parts store.
I'll second. All in favor? Four zero. Thank you, Tanya. If you can talk to Danya and let Rita and Troy know what we, where we stand. I will appreciate it. Thank you.
Yay, thank you, man.
Have a good night.
Sure, I could table this one, but discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the city Glen Rose benefits package for plan year two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five.
Uh, does anyone have any questions on?
Not any questions per se, but I would really like to try to. Reach out with the Water District, reach out to the County, reach out to, and maybe even partner up with the school. I mean, and I, I get it, you know, when you have fifteen, sixteen, eighteen members, it's a small pool.
I've been talking with the insurance broker about, you know, how do other cities fare when they partner with a county? Um, he did not encourage that.
Let's go find another broker.
Yeah, amen.
You know, everybody.
But I can um, continue kind of down that path and I can go talk with Nikki of the county.
Yeah.
See what uh, they might consider doing.
Uh, the Water District has five employees or whatever. I mean, yeah, it's.
Cause at, at this small of a pool, one, yeah.
It's difficult. This, I mean, you can see, you know, granted, it's a little under a fifty percent increase for the H M O.
That was already overpriced.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is already.
Yeah, yeah.
Catastrophic insurance.
Each deductible.
Yes.
Who is the broker?
Oh, it's Clark Adamson. It's not gonna, it doesn't really matter.
Clark Adamson. Clark Adamson is going to.
They go out for bid, just like any other place, they all get the same.
There is a fee charged for the brokerage.
Yes, it's the same for every broker.
Is it standardized and required?
Yes, it's a standard, yes, it's a standard.
And I can't help.
Yeah, I would just echo what George said, any way we can get any additional bodies into the collective.
That was one of my, yeah, that was one of my suggestions, so I will just continue down that. I don't think we're having this.
And cover what's being put in the place.
Hey, we're in the habit of, we are on a groove with partnering with the county, let's go.
That's right.
Let's, we're, let's keep it going.
Okay, so how do we want to end this discussion?
Just a quick question. My recollection was that we have like a cafeteria plan? That's the employee's benefit offering that we pay, right?
Yes, sir, it's a eight hundred dollar.
Allotment?
Yes, yes, sir. And, I mean, you know, you can look at the employee and family that pay eight hundred dollars, so it's not very far in it. And then the only other one that increased for the plan year was dental. Increased almost five percent.
Do we have time to hold to a little more?
Uh, we're going to need to go rather quickly because we need to start open enrollment, um, next.
That's, that's only if we change, right?
Yes.
That's only if we change, if they stay with the same current existing.
We would still do open enrollment.
Right, right, for any changes in dividends.
Yes.
I'm in the wrong business.
I'm telling you. Making some jack there and, and it's, it's legal theft.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do.
Nothing you can do.
It is.
They don't give it to the doctors either. I, I do have a suggestion, um, just to possibly help the employees, um, to increase the amount that we offer them a bit, eight hundred dollars and increase it by the one percent possibly that has been increased. Help out with the cost that's going up. I looked into, the, a concern was raised about the HSA because what we don't, what the employee doesn't use gets put into an HSA plan. For the year, the cap on it is forty-one fifty for individual coverage and eighty-three hundred for family. So these are the limits that you have to reach for, um, to get taxed on it.
No, that's going to reach that.
No. So a possible increase in the amount that's given to them.
So I know you and I have already had a little sidebar conversation, but.
And I, I went and looked it up and.
So, so are you, um, I don't want to say recommending, but are you of the opinion that, see, I pulled that from Saturday? That, uh, that we should consider maybe going up to nine hundred or to a thousand? What are you considering or?
I would consider at least a twenty percent to offset the increase.
Eight hundred and sixty, that would be thirty-two hundred dollar impact to the budget-ish.
Just to help our employees cover that.
I honestly think a nine hundred would be good because it's paraplane. I mean, the deductible is so high and that I really think that might help a lot. Because, I mean, it's so expensive to pay all that, you know? Because you're not meeting your, can't remit it.
Right.
So, I think we have the money to do it. We're not going crazy with employees, so.
I'm just questioning, nine hundred is sufficient, that's, that's my only concern. You know, I mean, like you said, deductible, deductible is so dang high, I mean, I'm, I'm a big pro employee.
Twenty percent is one sixty, which is nine sixty, so it's one thousand. One thousand and we have twenty, how many employees?
Currently, we have eighteen.
So two hundred times eighteen, it's, it's thirty six, I mean, you do all the math in your head. Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I will never do math in my head. I say we take it to a thousand. If, if this is what we have to work with and there's nothing we can do about it this go, and then I think we got to start working on next year tomorrow, like literally Water District, at school if possible. Me, hey, can I get in on it, whatever we got to do, yeah.
And there's got to be some way to skin this guy to make it better.
Find the little towns that we're around that, that are small like us and let's get, yeah.
They got to be dying.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just say.
Both are employees.
Yeah, both of them.
I would also just say that we've lost some employees to neighboring cities through recent.
Yeah.
Because, you know, everybody needs people and so they're willing to pay them more money in it. Our problem is, you know, if we adjust pay to keep somebody here, then all of a sudden, we've got an apartment with five other people that have been making, or have been there maybe a lot longer, and all of a sudden, they're looking going, well, what about me? So I think when you can do something like this, make it more attractive, somebody says to themselves, well, they may be offering two dollars more.
So, yeah, so I, I move to move forward with this plan, but to also increase our budget, um, contribution from eight hundred to a thousand.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Four zero. Congratulations, city employees.
Thank you.
You're right, Troy. In today's environment, it's not just about, it's about full comp.
It's total compensation, absolutely, yeah.
And we all face a little bit of inflation because we deboted for.
You have to vouch your time and apologize publicly. You don't know better.
Twenty, right? Eighteen.
Because they have a few vacancies.
Yes, that's right.
They have four current vacancies.
So twenty FTE, of which we have eighteen currently filled.
Okay, item number seven. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the approval of a software as a service agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc.
What department is this for?
Who's doing this?
Well, this, I believe was Stacy's and it was, um, if I remember reading right, we agreed to already fund this last year during the budget. And I think it was a change of companies, right? We're doing the same services, we're just changing companies.
That's right.
Yeah, different, different service packages was. Now, price, price, we, who we left was cheaper than this.
So we had a, we had a better performing software. Previous administration always chose whichever was the cheapest thing. So in moving to the cheapest thing, we ended up having a software that didn't work nearly as well. So actually ended up costing the city more in productivity was the recommendation. Do I remember that correctly, George-ish, right? Remember?
You're, you're spinning it like a great politician, but yes. I, I don't know.
Mr. Green, do you remember that?
I don't know that it was fifty-five, I don't know that it was fifty-five, sixty, eighty thousand dollars for the productivity.
I saw Mr. Green shaking his head, yes.
Wasted away, but.
Correct, yes.
Okay, whatever.
The feedback that we got was that it wasn't working.
Yeah, right, sure.
Yes, the correction, yes, but the feedback that we got was it wasn't working, it wasn't doing what it needed to do. That what it was doing was slower and harder to get done. Yes.
But it was cheaper.
But it, yeah, it was cheaper.
But that's what you get.
So I had one question as I was kind of reviewing this and, you know, it, it's, it's, I, I, I don't know, I honestly don't know the answer and I don't know that, you know, it's going to have to be something we'll follow up with Tyler software with, but these ideas of having an air gap on your systems and your redundancy? Let's find out what they do in that regard. Because obviously, we're putting all our stuff on their servers, but do they have an air gap for our information and our material as well? So if, if they get infected, we get infected, somebody else gets infected who gets it to us? Do they have that level of redundancy? And that's, that's, if you follow all these hacking things, that's been what has saved these larger organizations from having, they have this air gap redundancy, where it's a whole separate system, whole separate everything of a backup. But I just, I mean, I know you can't answer that, but I'd like to, I'd like to know.
Ask them that question and then say, and if you don't understand what they say, say, let me get George on that. And there you go.
I mean, it's not going to change.
Good question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I wonder what they do. Because it's, you know, when they're, when they're off for eight days, that's when your attacks come.
Right.
July fourth.
Right.
You know, Christmas Day, we got hacked, Super Bowl Sunday.
Okay, well, I move to move forward with, um, this new agreement, um, that we've already approved the budget for last year.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero, no against, passes? Discussion number eight, on number eight, discussion, consideration of possible action regarding wayfinding signs.
Well, I wish I had one right now. I thought you kind of operated this TV.
You want me to fix it for you?
That's what it needs to be.
PCN at the bottom. Oh, there, watch, y'all about to get off and someone's going to get us in a lawsuit.
Got to roll tape, roll tape, Troy. Roll tape.
Your computer, is it playing over there?
Yeah, it's on here, yeah, HDMI to HDMI. Is it connected to that?
No.
Because this is in here, so this makes me think it's connected.
I don't think so.
Go to the HDMI, let me see that input. Did you go to those HDMI inputs or you just want the PC input?
Well.
Red goes to red and black goes to black.
See, there's one here, here's number one.
How many, how many times have we, how many times have we done this?
They're not waiting.
Try three.
You just got me one at a time.
Oh, it's not three, it must be two.
Oh my gosh. Waiting for my parents to call me to ask me what they need to do with the TV now.
What is Netflix?
What's the password for Netflix?
What's that?
I'm sorry, I want you to that one. Nine triple X?
That's scary.
That's her, that's just going to show you, stab it.
We need an antenna.
How come we got no kids here? Plug it up and we're going to see if it works.
What about video M, did you see that?
What was saying, maybe? Oh yeah, you're plugged in like you're supposed to be.
I should, but thank you.
Because they're connected.
What about USB back to the laptop?
You have to do that. Do not know what this is though.
Okay, can you, basically, mayor, can we just talk about it without you?
Hit the, yeah, hit that, hit that. You hit it till I don't get in trouble. Cordial extra time, click the second.
Let's go back here.
Can we just do it? Somebody want to get tacos right now from Jack in the Box, is that what I just heard?
Well, I thought I heard.
I'm going to eat that taco, I need a few beers now before now. But I don't drink, so. Was it even morning? Either that or free for five dollars.
That's Biden inflation, I guess.
You know what, there for you is good tacos.
They are good tacos.
Only good ones though. I tried to talk to the security officer, they passed.
Really? Don't say that too loudly, we're still screaming.
They didn't have staff to make that.
So I swung around, I was like circling, I was like, where's the taco?
I drove up from Missouri, pulled in there to feed them.
No, not, send me to take a shot or you got it.
There's a taco, there's a taco. Another story about them.
I did, I did.
No, but why they're not here?
Oh, yeah. Light him on, light him on fire. Shaw, he's standing down north of you.
Oh, keep having them still, they're upset with her and goes hungry and shares.
Whole town said I'm fired, I'm having nothing.
Hey, George, we are still bad.
No, I can hear you talking.
Do you have a handout?
Yeah, we did a lot.
So what if we take this laptop to there?
No, it's not a cord.
I think there's a cord there.
That's where it's at, I was in. Oh, no, it's just a plug. Give you the cord. Oh, thank you, I feel like it's an old, like, old Mimo fit, these young men, like, yeah. I was born.
And that's going to be two. Look, if you got this HDMI cord just directly up to it. We're going to do it?
What are we doing?
Yeah.
I'm in. Now, now figure out, figure out which, which signal you are.
Sort of there.
No, you got to do it from your computer.
From the computer? Is this that share?
No, 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 no. Where is your phone? What the heck? Is she calling you? Look.
Oh, there we go.
Hold on, hold on, I got to be able to find the mouse now. Okay.
Cool.
Now, now you can do it, there you go.
Okay, so we had talked about wayfinding signs.
See if he's unmuted up there.
Are you on?
Are you, are you red or green?
I got them now.
State your address and tell us who you are.
Push the top, push the top. There it is.
Okay, so we had talked about wayfinding signs. We had looked at a private company that was going to install wayfinding signs. Um, and they do the slats, those cost fifty dollars a month. But as I started to look in other towns, and we've got a lot of them around us, like Granbury, let's see, the other one, maybe like Weatherford. But there's a lot of these signs out there with nothing on them, with white. And so, as, as, you know, we talked to merchants down here, you know, it became clear that maybe we should just hold back from having that company do it and we can't control. And then we can't control what's on their signs and take a look at what they would cost to do it ourselves, right? So I've got some just ideas, different ones. And, you know, looking around town, you know, at the intersections, I think there was like five in the downtown area. And then probably another four to five on sixty seven. So, just to give you some options to take a look at.
Are you thinking business names or business types? So are you thinking the restaurant name or just restaurants?
So, on sixty seven, it would be business type. Sixty seven would say downtown, city hall. Bootiques or shops, restaurants. It wouldn't necessarily give a name, and that's part of the issue with going with the company. Because they're selling them to individual companies. It could be, you know, Joe's Real Estate.
Yeah.
You know.
Realtor one, Realtor two, Realtor three, Realtor four.
Yeah, so. These would be probably primarily on sixty seven, but could be along Bernard as you leave sixty seven coming this way as well, so. This one's good.
I like that, I like that.
Yeah. And then now we get into individual poles, which this would be more the downtown. Rather than, you know, we looked at intersections, and the problem is that most of the places you're gonna stop. Where you would see these signs, there's already a stop sign, you know, a text dot sign. You know, maybe a utility pole or four, so. This would be nice because the poles are smaller, so they wouldn't take a, wouldn't look junky.
I like that too.
I don't like the colors. I like the uniform black ones.
I like this one, I'll be honest with you, that's probably my favorite.
Wait, you do that same arrows though with the old.
And I think this in the square would be awesome. Because you might have one that says La Vida, and it's at Walnut and Bernard.
So would we do, because I, would we do businesses or would we still just even on the square? Because especially as we're talking about expanding, I'm trying to stop saying the square so much, expanding downtown.
Yeah.
Would we just wanna say restaurants? Because there's more restaurants that way, and museum, and restaurants, and still just doing, so that we don't have too much clutter.
If you're downtown, then you need to advertise restaurants, the restaurants.
So could our kiosk do that?
Well, then you gotta be walking, you want something that's gonna grab people on the road. Or stopped at, you know, Elm and Bernard.
Coming down, taking their Instagram moment, and then they see the sign, oh, La Vida's just up around the corner.
Yeah, like, they may not have even known, or Whiskey Woods, for instance, because it's off the square, you know? So Whiskey Woods Steakhouse, or whatever kind of language they wanna use.
Would they only pick one pole with which to be on, like, would they have to pick a pole?
Well, we would control.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we control.
Okay. Okay, got it, got it, I just, if it were me and it was my business, I'd be like, I want my business on every single pole.
So line on the ones with two.
You know, you're in the doghouse, pull your sign.
Ones that are, have two poles with all the different ones, you could say, you know, boutiques or, you know, wineries. Just something generic, but once you're in the square, it's individual signs.
You know, we could incorporate some city arrows and say Weatherford two hundred and seventy miles. Highco four hundred and ten miles.
Yeah.
We could do that on Highco sign.
We could, we could do like we did at Charlton, you know, where the hell is Texas A and N? Hundred sixty seven miles from Charlton.
So I got this literally ten minutes before the meeting. And, but, and that was just kind of the ones that I had picked out. But as you see, they're gonna range from fifteen hundred to twenty four hundred each. But again, you've got a lot of businesses on there, so. I was thinking we could do maybe four downtown to start with. And see how that goes, see how it looks. And then if we like it, we can go, we can expand the program out to sixty seven. And, you know, you, you do kind of need something out there, just to say, and, and we could even do two. We could do it at, you know, both ends. But just, you know, and I, and I remember a couple that my wife and I met at Blackie's, and they had come from Fossil Rim. And they said, we didn't even know there was a downtown, you know, we thought we were going into a neighborhood. So if you had one along the way to say businesses this way, I think it would be a good thing. Anyway, but I put this on there and I'll go through for each one, but, and maybe I'll send it to you individually for, you know.
I think we could probably decide right now which design we like, so that you don't have to do multiple extra work, right?
Okay.
Because everybody had the same reaction at the same time, just about.
I'm a reactor.
Well, you don't count, then.
You got a reactor, you got a reactor, you're out.
Would, I mean, would this be something that we would ask the businesses for a hundred bucks, kick in? And, and you get on the sign?
We could.
Yeah.
They'd be crazy not to.
Can you go? How else would we pick who we're putting on there, where we're putting them?
So where you're putting them is gonna be dictated by, are there any other poles there? So again, like a Walnut and Bernard. You know, you've got these utility poles sitting there, so could you put them on a utility pole? I don't know. If you stick another pole there, I mean, that's one of the things, that's our issues, we've got too many poles everywhere. In regards to the, I think you gotta. Like, if we're asking people not to put signs everywhere, then I think this is good, that we're willing to offer that to them, to direct people to them.
Are you willing to say this, if you're gonna offer the sign, then the city's gonna pay for it? Or you went, George, with the hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think the ci, if the city got the pole, let the businesses buy the sign.
I would recommend if we're asking them to, you know, get rid of a junky sign on the sidewalk or whatever. That we're willing to just put up a sign for them.
Can you go previous couple of slides? Which one it was on?
This way.
All right, keep going back. That's the one I like.
Yep.
Especially given the downtown historic district.
Yeah, that looks good, that actually kind of matches the toppers on the stop signs that say historic. Did you put those up?
You're talking about the ones that say historic district?
Yeah.
They went up in twenty, excuse me, in oh, eight, oh nine, so yeah, we paid for them.
That kind of looked like them. And then that's good for sixty seven.
Those are the two that were my picks. What about you, since you didn't?
I like that one, but the thing is, how, how are we gonna determine who, who we're putting on the sign?
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna wanna be on the sign.
So are we good with these?
I think that we could say, so could we say this today, yes, we're good with those two, and then you make a recommendation to us on how we choose people? My lean would be, if you want your business name on there, then you have to pay a hundred bucks. And, because we also don't have the space for every single business, I mean, we couldn't put every single business, so to your point, how do we decide who?
I think you gotta charge, but then you gotta be willing to put up some more signs if everybody's coming up with a hundred bucks.
Several's advocate, I don't even wanna mention this, but I'm going to, can those be removed and replaced with another business, just in case?
Yeah.
We should, we'd be able to print them here, here at the, Jerry Sees does all of our printing, or Gabe downtown.
They said they could do them, so.
So we would just go back over probably with like the black vinyl or white vinyl, whatever the background is, and come back over on top of it.
Yeah, I could do it on my.
Just, just throwing out another thought, are there attachments that we can put on the existing ornate poles on the square?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, so. There is one right, like, right where our CVB building is, and ornate looking street lamp. That would probably be one that we could use, and then you catch people right as they turn, or they come through the light there, so. That would make sense to do that. They're on the, you know, where the River House Grill sign, the little sandwich board is. Yeah. It's possible that the signs, I don't know what text odds policy is about stop signs or about, you know, distant signs, you know, for Walnut Springs. But it's possible.
They've got a policy.
Yeah. Well, it's probably, heck no, so, anyway. So are we good with these two?
Yes. And I think we have to do two on sixty seven, I mean, we have, we.
Well, sixty seven, we need something with big font to be able to see it, I mean, to draw nine months.
So y'all don't like that arrowed one, the one with the arrow, the more?
This one?
I did.
One more, no, where's that one?
Oh, I like that with the arrows, I just like the topper on the other.
Well, see, I perceive the other one as an arrow, because it goes bink, bink, so I still took it as pointing me into a direction. And that was a technical term that I used just now. I, I like the other one better, I also, I also happen to be, I like colors in that I like going, okay, if I see green, I know that's food, if I, or whatever. But I'm, I'm, I'm either way on that.
Brown for attractions?
Right, like, brown is usually like your attractions, and then, yeah, maybe red is for food, hungry.
Hundred dollars.
Yeah, the hundred dollars worth of sign?
We'll cost share.
Everybody, so.
You're right.
Everybody will be able to come up with a hundred dollars, so you can't fit everybody on all, you know.
Well, I like the topper on that, that one that, that we talked about, but then again, if we're gonna have a whole lot of, of signs, then we're, we're not gonna be able to have the topper.
Well, the question is this, we absolutely go to the owners before we order and find out what the demand is.
Yeah.
So we don't have to worry about not having room, just how many do we need, based on their request.
At least we don't.
I would not be, I would not have heartburn over this right here, just so you know, like, i- if, if the demand is high, no, 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 I mean, having food, parking, as opposed to businesses. I would not have heartburn on not having the businesses' names. And ju- just, just folks knowing, because folks walk the square and they think that's it, they don't know that they can walk that way and there's still stuff, or that they can walk in, they used to be able to get Boba tea there, and I, so I. If we find that it's just gonna be too many names, and we just go to this and then they don't have to pay anything, I don't have heartburn with that either.
Then make it two hundred.
Like, you don't know when this is gonna be out, or whatever, gonna change, and you just never know.
It's too late to lower the tax rate, George.
I'm trying to recruit the thirty six grand.
Hey, Troy, what, what are we talking like, like, how, how, what, how high, how tall are they, what's the?
I think nine foot, I saw on one, I don't remember which one it was.
Larry, is that to code?
Probably not.
Is that to code? Ten foot or how?
Arrow was, where you would have.
On the height?
Nine foot.
Arrow, like, if you just.
Um, I don't know.
Street sign, I'm sure, I mean, it's what we always see, it's like that big, yeah, street sign, street name sign-ish.
You can't put them where people are gonna walk into them.
So for this, do we just say, continue, go forward, yes, awesome, come bring something to us? But do we all agree that we want four on the square and one on each side of sixty seven, and he can come back with something with that?
I think you need a third one on sixty seven, I think you need one at each end and one in somewhere approximately in the middle.
Yeah.
Oh, her foot, okay.
No, we don't want people coming down the herd.
Yeah, look at you.
Cyclone or Grumps, right at Grumps' corner or somewhere.
Okay, yeah, so then three, three and four.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we are going to have a lane building update.
He was just about to give that.
If you would let Troy tell us what we got, you may answer your question.
That's exactly correct. And that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, so we've had environmental come out and address some of the issues with the tanks, so they finished those. We've engaged with an architect, the committee members decided, Brian Gaffin, everybody was qualified. You know, Brian was extremely competitively prized, but, you know, his experience and reputation, he lives in Granbury, so. There was just a lot of reasons that the committee felt like he was the best choice. So we're going to be moving forward with him. We met initially, and I think we're still waiting on them as far as some of the tanks, but I think he's kind of got an idea of. Kind of what we're looking for and maybe some options. And then we did secure the right of way behind, so we'll be executing those transfers. We're on our way.
Oh, the tank spilled with sand yet?
But that is the next thing. They've done all the testing for leakage, so.
Anything else?
We're on our way.
And do you have anything that you wanted to speak to?
I just wanted to confirm this is being paid for with city tax, right? Well, we took it out of the budget last year, is that a fine, strictly taxed, okay, all right?
Yep. Why, did you wanna make it down there?
I happen to know some nonprofits that might have gotten into the re, the preservation of that building. Like, you've decided to use city tax money, so.
Well, if you have an option, we could always be persuaded, so.
It's not, it's not, um. There, there's, there's two or three that would make.
You should come visit with our city administrator.
I was just asking.
I would love for you to do that.
Yeah.
I was just asking you.
We'll take all the grant and gift dollars we can get.
Absolutely.
Okay, folks, we're gonna move to the consent agenda, as you know, if you don't have any specific questions for one of the agenda items, we can approve these all encompassing. Does anyone have an individual agenda item they'd like to discuss?
We're just talking ten, eleven, twelve, right, we're gonna do thirteen and fourteen separately? Or that's what I would at least recommend.
Why are they under there, because those?
I don't know, I just saw one of the agendas in there, think they should be discussed.
Okay, well, give me ten, eleven, twelve.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Four zero, no against, we will go to item number thirteen, thank you, Rich, approval or other action regarding the city of Bren Roses, Texas municipal league membership renewal. This is required, there's no discussion necessary.
Spending city money, so I figure we need to discuss it.
It doesn't, it didn't have on here what the.
It's a thousand and three dollars, yeah.
Yes, we need to do it, but yes, we needed to say that, yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve item number thirteen as presented for one thousand and three dollars.
Good night, Mr. Green.
Good night, Mr. Green.
All in favor? Four zero, no against?
I'll second it.
Oh, George, uh, Stewie did, if you didn't hear him.
Stuart second. Item number fourteen, approval or other action regarding an updated cyber liability and data breach response. Interlocal agreement with the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool, whatever the heck that means.
It means we're all paying together to get the protection. What we're trying to get with our insurance. Yeah, yeah, I moved to approve the continued or the revised interlocal risk pool.
Same with George, all in favor? Four zero, no against? I guess that's kind of double entendre, isn't it? Four zero, no against? Uh, we're going to go down to staff reports, we're missing some people, we'll start with. Chief of Police. And this is in paper, we did not get it on the system, but you'll have it in writing. Any questions? I know you may not have had a chance to review, so please do so. Chief, anything out there we should know?
No, sir. Well, at least so. Yeah, be, be.
I put that in my newspaper article. I said, get ready, folks, we're gonna have our.
It's time.
Vacancies, what is your current schedule? I mean, I don't know if you really want to throw that out in public forum, but I mean, are you five days a week, seven days a week?
Five days a week right now, especially since the school.
Nice offer to take the old board from seven eleven to Johnson County.
No, no, I'm good. He requested, so I thought it'd be good, before he wanted to go.
Raise your hand or acknowledge when you're satisfied that you don't have a question.
Oh, you're, I'm a slow reader. Give me a minute.
Thank you, Stuart.
Hold it up, sir.
Yes, you have to wait till everybody else raises their hand.
Down here's all, I mean, this is a summary.
You got there, okay, thank you.
I just jumped to the footnote. I ain't that fast.
You were the footnote reader.
Till finish.
Fourteen parked in Fireline? Fourteen people?
Big rocks.
Oh, okay, okay, I was supposed to say, I like you like that. Okay, got, so, whoa. Forty-three, oh, never mind, I know, okay.
You just gotta say it out loud occasionally.
Okay. The, um, the, are, so with the process with folks that were pulling over for driving on the wrong side of the road, is it the first time we're giving you a warning and now we know and then, so now you know, okay, got it, thank you.
No, no repeat offenders yet, so.
Okay. I did notice, um, there had been overturned truck on sixty-seven at like five in the morning last Wednesday, but there were a lot of, um, trucks driving that background, so, because I had to drive the background too. And, um, but coming back, they were coming, coming, so that means they were doing it the, the right way, I think.
I pour most of them out going to the left every morning, so you know.
Same with being.
We only have a side.
Okay.
Now, they should be getting us, uh, something this week probably, texted, so that'll be good.
That'll work.
Fantastic.
And raise your hand.
I did, I sure did. But I wasn't gonna hold it up. I don't, I don't have the guns for that.
I'm good, yeah, oh yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, Buck. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Building and Planning Department, Larry, house, please. All right, permits were up again this month quite a bit. We've got a lot of activity going on. We're starting to pull in some more items. I just released, uh, several of the small school projects. McDonald's is coming on, um, they'll be turning over on the nineteenth, I think nineteenth or the week of the nineteenth, and then September first, they open. So they're getting real close. Dino Car Wash is gonna open up. Don't want to tell you all this, but I'll, I'll steal his advertisement. He's giving two weeks of free car washes. So they, he'll, yeah, he, he's gonna, yeah, he's gonna open on nineteenth. School's gonna start going vertical pretty short on the multipurpose building. They just finished the last of their gray beams and pier caps. So those were done and they'll start to red iron next week.
Are we doing that inspection? Or, okay.
Yes. Now, they are self-performing with the contractor slash architect slash engineer. That, that, that's a self-performing firm, so they're giving me a lot of the reports that I need to look at, but I'm also eyes on. Both my, my fire marshal's been out there with me, uh, plumbing inspector's been out there and I've been out there. Yes, we're definitely looking at it. How much longer before the pier caps will be prepared? They're done. They're like, they're poured today, the last of them. There was, they had to leave out for getting the trucks in, but the pier caps are done, so now it's red iron next week. You'll start seeing it go vertical. Anything else? Council members? Uh, Rita, could we have a John Go戈恩Rose report?
Um, hi, everybody. Uh, I gave you a piece of paper or something. This would kind of give you just a little update even just from Saturday. Let me see here. So. Occupancy, um, the two that reported back to me, this is basically our top two, are at forty-five percent occupancy and forty-two percent occupancy. Pretty good. As you know, everything we presented on Saturday, so we're just, even since then, signed on for our marketing management team. That's really exciting. Initiating new social media marketing efforts. Talked to her today, so we're just trying to line up all the things that we want to do and make sure that all of it's kind of makes sense and we're going in the right direction. So we'll be having like a slew of new photographs taken, videos. I've secured somebody to do photo photography for the wine fest, um, drone footage, just we want to capture all the things that are coming up. I think just so that as we look into the next year of tourism, we have these kinds of, like the Plexi Music Fest and the Swine Fest. Anything that's going on on the square, want to be able to capture all that stuff and promote it for the following year. To think like way ahead for this kind of stuff. Just really looking into all of the different advertising opportunities. Pam sent me something about this wedding planner thing, so I talked to her today, this woman from the American Association of Certified Wedding Planners. And, you know, depending on what, if I think it would make sense, you know, these things go from like four thousand to twenty-five thousand. I mean, it goes from one email to planners to being in the weekly newsletter for fifty-two weeks. It's, you know, the options are all out there, but I just want to be really intentional about where all the advertising dollars are going this next year. So same thing like with radio, talked to radio today and she's, you know, it's a lot of money to be on local radio. So I, I want to really research going a little further out with radio, because I'm not sure about to spend, you know, ten thousand dollars that it only reaches to Dallas. I just have to look at that and just make sure that that's well. I don't, because I can't translate that to an overnight stay, you know, that there's really no data. I'm only kind of going off of, well, we have this many listeners. Well, I don't know, you know. It's local.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But it's ninety-two one and I was, I was on radio this morning, front half, seven thirty.
So that's great, but we want to reach the non-local crowd too. So, I mean, maybe it would make sense to have a little bit just so people hear it, I guess. I don't know if that's a thing, but I just, you know.
I think this is what you were talking about Saturday around working with our hoteliers to find out where their folks are coming from and then targeting it to those spaces is, is, you're, you're on point with that.
Um, then I go, go next week to Austin for the TACDB conference, so that's really, I'm looking forward to that. And let's see, I think that'll just be, you know, I, I don't, this is the second one I've gone to. The first, first one was for marketing, so this one, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but I'm told it's the one I have to go to. So I'm gonna go and make the most of it and let's see, meeting with Warren tomorrow at Fossil Rim to talk about starting to make these videos that we want to do for ads for, maybe for in-game ads on ESPN, possibly getting some commercial time on, you know, Christian news channels that are twenty-four seven, just trying to hit that family market, um, who is our customer? Um, and not just like everybody. So there's lots of different niches that Glen Rose is, but I just want to do things a little differently than what's always been done. And not saying what was done before was wrong, but I think it's good to kind of pivot as we grow and as we revitalize downtown. And heading towards that, I forgot to say it's Saturday, but heading toward our hundred year is twenty-twenty-six, hundred year as incorporated as a city. So I think that's kind of something to, a goal to look forward to in your mind as a vision of twenty-twenty-six, the spring, to maybe in essence, in, in, you know, in my mind, it's like ribbon cutting the, the downtown square and re, you know, looking at it like, wow, a hundred years of Glen Rose, look how far we've come, all the changes, all the amazing things, all the things that are the same and all the things that are new and just putting that all together into one beautiful celebration. Like I said, invited the governor, hopefully, maybe we'll happen to have Trump come, I don't know. It'll be two hundred and fifty years for the America also, two hundred and fifty years. Um, Chamber Luncheon on Thursday, um, that's, I'm, I try to, I'm gonna try to keep going to those and they can support and I show my face at these kinds of things and so show the support to these businesses. Um, Glen Rose Area Guide, the Hood County News came into my office like the first, and within the first three weeks I was in this job and wanted to do a Glen Rose Area Guide, which they said that, that's never been done before. Uh, as, as far as an outside person coming in to create an area guide, they went around and got all the ads and got all the things and we've got a beautiful article and an ad in there, so that'll be amazing to hand out something updated and new for our visitors. Let's see, starting to plan for Christmas Town, um, I'm meeting with someone Thursday to talk about her helping us with these events, just getting things going for Christmas. I wish to get a Christmas committee. Um, I don't know, I need your feedback on the candy fair around the square. I just came up with that because I had gotten some sort of feedback that there were two safe treats things and I just want to make sure, if you want me to do that, I can. I just, I thought there was two and I didn't want to mix them.
I believe one of them is National Night Out. We were just talking about this a couple of weeks ago, weren't we?
Well, actually, National Night Out was celebrated in conjunction with Safe Treats.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. So I, I think, um, I think where, I know where I was at the other night with some first responders and other things. They were thinking, we don't know who was in charge of the National Night Out, but maybe we need to separate the two so they could have their own day. Is that what you got?
National Night Out.
You got out of it?
Yeah.
It's also done by Crime Stoppers here locally, and Marilyn Kelly and them were doing that at one point and they had it and then it just kind of could join.
I mean, I, I, I get how it happened, but I think the first responders wanted it separate.
No, that's totally valid for them, but Safe Treats is, that's why I think you back, go back to separate.
Yeah, go back to you, Mark Stewart. It's always been Safe Treats. We had a thousand kids last year. Everyone ran out of candy. They had a lot. It was very successful under that.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't, whatever y'all want to call it, I just, I didn't know if it was a thing, so I just came up with that.
My kids don't go, so it doesn't matter.
I don't celebrate Halloween.
I know, I don't, I'm not a Halloween person either, but.
It's a devil's holiday.
I don't like it. I'm with you, Stuart. I am not into it. I really am not, but I know that this is like the kids like to dress up.
I, I would say talk to the merchants on the square, because I love the candy fair around the square. I think that's super cute. I think it's, and even if you keep the name, say, even if you keep the name Safe Treats, you still, Safe Treats Candy Fair on the Square. You got, I mean, it's super cute and the rhyme is super cute. I think you can do the two, but just talk, talk with the merchants. But I do know that families like it because it is a safe place to go, so that term safe is important. I think you could combine the two. I need to say this, yes, yes, and yes. Merchandising our windows downtown is a huge option for us three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. And if this is the thing that kicks off folks thinking about that in a different way, I love it. I'm happy to say whoever wins gets a whole reel feature, like whatever we have to do to get them and, and maybe we can then translate that down to every single holiday and then every single month, whatever, because merching windows is massive and there's enough holidays and events to merch your win. I mean, I, I used to do this, so you go from Christmas to Valentine's to Saint Patrick's Day. I mean, there's, there's something to be able to do constantly and that would be a huge differentiator for our downtown. If when people are driving, they see these great merged windows, so I love this. And if this creates a, a new habit or a new, whatever we want to, we, I mean, we could literally turn it into every holiday we do it and we're gonna feature your business and you're gonna get a full thirty-second reel that we're gonna make for you, something. I think that they will, they will quickly find the benefits of it, because as somebody who used to do it, whatever you put in your windows, if you were intentional about it, it sold. So it will drive business for them and it'll be great for us, so I.
Well, Troy, I'll give Troy the, Troy was talking about making the windows like window shopping and like New York and everything and so then I was, but I think somebody, one of the merchants, actually, the girl in the Bonanza, the girl that works there, not Mac, she was saying that to me the other day and she goes, you know, one, one time we did this and it was like a Christmas card or something in the window or whatever. And, and then I just went right to my office, I'm like, it's the most wonderful window of all, I was just thinking so. And then I sent to him and I was like, what do you think?
I love it.
But I like the idea too of just, I don't know if Whiskey Woods is right, we can say River House or whatever, but just, I wanted them to have an opportunity, because I've heard in the merch of eating several people say like, well, I haven't been to Whiskey Woods. I haven't, you know, it's, it seems like it's too much sometimes and so I thought it'd be nice, like a prep, like a beautiful dinner out or take their employees or I don't know, just something.
Two categories. You could have like a traditional and a, I don't know, classic or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I just, different criteria. And then have the art, I talked to, um, I talked to, I guess it's Laura or Laura that Veronica sent me over to her for, to get the art students to jury it and to judge it. I think it'll be a way to involve them.
And then we can in future, we can have, we can, it's a way to get visitors to come, right? So visitors, you come and you vote. We put a QR code on the window, vote for your favorite, you know, and get them, get them involved in it and it's gonna make them go to stores, but first we've got to get them to decorate their windows. I love it. I'm thrilled. I see massive potential that could actually drive business and that could make us a place that, okay, come on, come and stay.
Instagrammable River Walk.
Oh, my gosh.
With, with your snow globe right there and then a little carriage set up.
Stay the night, shop on, on, what is it, on Small Business Saturday?
Four Strong Carriage?
Yes.
Chris, yes, I love it. And I was even gonna say, you know, one thing that I thought was talking to, um, somebody about was, you know, the, the tally building? I was gonna say, and I, maybe I'm out of line, but I was gonna say, maybe we could offer to have, you know, have people come and paint the windows, instead of putting something in the window, like maybe they could paint like a beautiful Christmas scene. Or like a manger or an activity or whatever for Christmas, just so during Christmas time while people are strolling the square, you know.
I got a train. I'll let them borrow. They can put it in the window. It's a Christmas train.
Oh.
Or maybe somebody, or maybe somebody could offer to help them or, I don't know, just like maybe, maybe we could find a way to, make it pretty.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, of course.
For business, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, so that's that, um, and then just like also Troy and I've been talking about, like maybe just, you know, I think you did have a fall festival on the square, right, last year? Because I think we came to it. I saw you doing something in the fall. It was like, the Christmas music was on, no, it was, it was fall for sure. But anyway, we just want to do, we were thinking of with the park, maybe having a fall, some kind of fall festival.
And.
Or not festival, but fall markets.
So you did, um, last year you had talked to, I might be getting this out of order, but I think last year you talked to The Promise about doing a nativity.
Yeah, live nativity, they did.
So we need to start having those conversations, because we did it real quick last time, right?
They still want to do it.
So now is the time to start having those conversations now.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Rita.
Because I love that, love it, love it.
Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm gonna speed date, but this is from Saturday when you all bailed on me.
Actually, me and George closed the place down.
So you got out of school for shopping?
I got it.
You got out of school?
I got hold their revolts, we closed shop and then they're not in, George.
So you got out of it. There you go.
They don't want me to go anywhere.
Truth.
Okay. So I was gonna show this to you guys because.
Thank you.
I want to show this at the merchants meeting and, um, You know, people talk about, hey, what's the plan, right? So I just put some thoughts together on video. I kind of wanted to just go through it real fast and I'll be adjusting these some, but. Okay, so what are the goals? Quality of life would be parks, fitness. Now, look, we talked about the centarians, you know, doing the blue zones. And look, that would be awesome if we could do that here. It really would be good and it leads to a healthier population, so. Value fun, health, music. Now, how do we use our music destination? I think we got to start advertising that. And obviously revenue would be downtown square, continue amping up the square. And then 67, highest best use. You know, how do we work with some of the other businesses, the types of businesses that people seem to want? So bowling alley or batting cages, something around entertainment. And then continue to see, I think, a revitalization within some of the businesses that we're seeing. So some of our business have really amped it up. You know, the Steensons Building right next to the new coffee shop looks great. The little strip center further east by the little Mexican place. Restaurant looks really, really good. And then we measure things. This is a great report about who our visitors are. I know we discussed it on Saturday, but. Who are they? Where are they coming from? We need to continue to do this. You know, we asked at the last merchant meeting if they would report, not necessarily what their sales were, but were they up? You know, let's start keeping track of whether they're up 5%, down 3%, whatever the case may be. But we need to know if what we're doing is seeing any activities, if seeing any results. And then areas of growth, and I put the fire on there, that's Ria Dosa. And this is a little cautionary thing and that is Ria Dosa is very much like Glen Rose. It has one industry. And that is tourism. And so what we've seen there is when you do have something happen and it affects tourism. It's, it's going to be massive for that town. So I think we really need to put, you know, when we get the studies back, we're looking at. We need, we really need to put some thought behind and maybe we partner with the counties, with the county again. And maybe attracting some more businesses over by the jail and some available land that's out there and what we consider our industrial park. So I'd like to see us really come up with that secondary industry. So planning, you know, P&amp;Z is looking at an expansion of the town square. That's a great first step. Our staff and P&amp;Z need to get together after that and really kind of do a workshop and see what that looks like. And then obviously, you know, bring that to council with P&amp;Z. Stakeholder meetings, merchants group. I love the fact that they're really talking about, you know, appointing people and running it themselves, which is awesome. So they're very much engaged. Chamber, I've met with Brian several times. I think it's got momentum. There's no reason we can't really make that chamber into a force here. Not just networking, but really about businesses. Restaurants, developers, obviously. Design, we talked about lights, EDC grant, that's going to be coming up. We need to figure out when we're going to do a. A meeting, so we'll get that to you in the next day or so. We've got consultants. I'm going to be talking to a design architect around downtown design, what it should look like. And you might consider that like a downtown master plan, right? But I think it, if it's not too expensive. You know, it really helps you kind of imagine, okay, well, you know, do, what do we need on that next outer ring off the square, right? What's going to work? What's going to pull people over to that area? Because I think we've seen now with some of the boutiques that are on the outer fringes, they're, they've struggled. And so when we ask them not to put signs out everywhere, they take it pretty hard because they don't feel like they get enough traffic. So I think the wayfinding signs are going to help. So, and I think the lights are going to help, so. But I think we need to look at ways and the types of businesses we need to be bringing to specific areas. Strategy, again, markets. I think we need to do a town hall when we get the lights going, when we, yes, sir.
Speaking of the lights, how far away are we? I see they're almost put up nearly everywhere it looks like.
They are putting meters, I guess, up. Is that right?
Uh, I think.
Oh, oh, for the lights up here, yeah. We're getting meter cans. We're still short on a couple of buildings. I'm getting approval from the owner to put them up. But we've had about eight meter cans up right now and you can see the lights on top of buildings. So there's a glitch in getting part of that corner now from us.
We have not gotten.
From up to CBB.
Yeah, that's right. So we're still a month out, maybe?
The owners to contact.
Okay.
So we get signatures.
I think he's, we approved a lift, so I think he was saying they could get one side, one complete side, pretty quick.
Must be here with the tally building this side, I would expect. There's still problems on the other side.
It's, it's the south west and north side that we're having trouble getting two signatures on.
Lost gas building.
No, we're good on that.
They don't have lights on it though.
I think they're waiting for the lift. There's a list of buildings that they're, don't want to go on the roof.
It's on process, it's still going. Can't wait.
That'd be awesome. And then really, we need to really think about events again where it's our town for now. So I mean, we always will, I don't mean to imply that we won't. But, you know, I think we need to support the Wine Fest. And really make it successful. And then we're going to get into Christmas and what we talked, what we've started talking about as far as amping up our, our Christmas event. And I think we need to try to engage as many people. I was thinking maybe like a Sherri Steenson or, you know, a Tracy from the merchants group. You know, really try to get a cross section of people, I think, would be good. And then, you know, still maybe think about what we're going to do in the spring, because I think having one every quarter would be good. Then areas of focus, obviously the things we're doing with tourism. But I think, you know, we talked about murals and we've got the, the CBB mural that we need to make a decision on. So I think on our next meeting, we'll have some options for you there. And I mean, they're basically the same design, which incorporates the Western emphasis that we want to have. But just little tweaks. And then obviously, sales property tax, which again gets into my meeting tomorrow and other discussions that we're having. Copperfields, green tournaments, sales and hot tags. I think it is a diamond in the rough. Heritage Park becomes a place for city markets, movies in the park, events, which all help sales tax. And then recreation, what that could mean with it truly walkable downtown when we get the sidewalks from Big Rocks to the square. So we make that whole complete loop. I think it's going to be pretty awesome. And then I think communication again with the town hall would be great. But feel free to send me suggestions, but this is going to be an ongoing, we got to.
Sales tax question for you?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, on the, on the graph chart that we got into the packet, I know it wasn't under yours. It doesn't include, the grand total doesn't include July or August's figures.
Yeah.
So needed that, but I noticed August was huge. Is there a chance that August's sales tax include the concert weekend or Plexi Music Fest weekend?
No, I thought it was July.
You said July. I saw it in your, there's a, and there's a $20,000 difference in July.
Yeah.
But there's a $100,000 difference in August, so I'm trying to think.
We aren't.
We're a month behind August.
We're a month behind and we're not dry this year.
That's true.
Right? Like, we're not dry. The river makes a huge difference in our, in our number of people that come. And we're not, that could be.
I'm just wondering if some of that is probably.
Because I think it's two months trailing. So that August report was for what closed out in June. So that caught the.
There's some trailing that always goes on, late reporting. Which is great news.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm looking at a 450,000.
Gain.
Gain.
Pretty impressive.
Which is true.
Yeah.
Which honestly, when you think about it. There's your answer, right? You want to make more money? You want to bring in more money? Don't worry about charging people $100. We'll, we'll do another music fest and really amp up the downtown square and we can make even more. So everything should have an ROI, so anyway, that's all I've got.
I mean, there's just no doubt. I mean, that's, that's our industry.
Yeah.
Tourism is our industry, you know, I mean, until we develop and go find somebody else. You know, we can be synergistic, not another, you know, restaurant. But you know, something that really adds to the tax base and adds to the work base of the community.
It is a little more girdled or steered or protected or whatever is the right word from the wildfire.
And honestly, again, you know, I met with Vicki, who's going to be doing the boutique over here. You know, you think about all the things that are in the pipeline now like that. You, you talk about amping up the town square. That will amp up the town square. That will attract other types of businesses here, restaurants, wineries. You know, I, I just think we're so close to getting there. But everything we need to do is just adding to what we're currently seeing. So, you know, how do we do it? I think we're on the right track.
And with baked opening in January, is that too? That's a perfect time to, we might be slow or something. It just was another thing to kind of look forward to. That's kind of, it just keeps momentum coming, so right when it's going to, you know, after Christmas. It's like, well, now we got, you know, so I think it's big time.
I mean, even people, you think about the cars and I mean, I sit on this square and watch traffic all the time. I have a really boring life. But most cars turn right. Right? So River House Grill, if we can help direct, if we amp up that side of the square, you know. What a big impact that could have on them. I, I do think Jim is going to put something right there, right by it, whether that's a mixed use building. You know, and you know, there is a lot of tire kicking about the Glen Hotel. And that would be really cool. So I, I think we're closer than we think. But I just think we've got to be really intentional about what fills in the gaps. We don't have that many buildings, you know, so. Anyway, but yeah, it was pretty awesome.
House members, any further business that you have?
The only thing I would just like to say is that when we were out at the Republican Club meeting and Representative Chairman Williams was there. We made contact with his, one of the people that works for him and we're going to be kind of talking with him about, you know, maybe being able to have a. A designated allocation of money, because we do have a special, unique situation where we have a power plant, an evacuation route. And, you know, maybe they can put some money towards the bypass, get that priority up a little bit higher. So that was one thing we asked him and, and he, he was positive about it, so.
Well, and again, text, I expressed the opinion that if we were to get involved and meet with local stakeholders and we could. You know, have any influence there. That could help. I still think it's going to go to 2028, 2029, not 2030, whatever. Anyway.
All right, any else? All right, regular sitting meeting adjourned at 9:17 PM.
I just watched it. That's it. And I didn't get to do anything with it.
We're just going to leave it on and watch.